Right as Gregory watches, walks in, I slam that. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to Town Council Work Session for December, September 27th, 2023. It's four o'clock. Before we go to planning commission stuff, I want to do one thing. As many of you know, we just had Mountain Towns 2030 and fortunately, we didn't do it in 2020 like we were supposed to because in the intervening years between the 2019 version in Park City and, and our Mountain Towns this week, we hired a bunch of incredible people really made this event really special. And for those of you that didn't have a chance to show up, it was outstanding. It was so well done. People were so impressed with, with everything and in particular, our staff. So we have a couple of just small gifts for the four people that really went above and beyond to make Mountain Towns 2030 successful. Joey, Teddy, and Matt, if you guys want to just come up and grab these and then I'm just gonna use Jesse's for myself since she's not here. But you guys did such an awesome job. I can't, I cannot thank you enough.
Who is that?
Teddy. Oh, I know, right? I didn't recognize you. Guys, thank you so much. That would have been a bummer of an event without these guys. So yeah, it was awesome. So, all right. Planning Commission decisions for the ninth. Any, or for the 20th, any questions? Anyone? Any call ups this evening? Make Truckee's life, if we called someone up, he'd like that?
It's been so tame lately.
No. What do you want to talk about?
I think it really points out the need to get 24 tightened up and get that study commissioned and, you know, to get an RFP out and get, I know we have it budgeted for 23 and just to get that RFP on, get it going and, and really tidy up that whole thing. So
I agree.
You know, it, it, you know, this one makes sense, but you know, with this and every one of them, we're gonna see the same.
Yeah. Do you have a line on a somebody that would do that kind of study for us?
Yeah, well, RRC is one that might be, comes to mind, but Lori's got a couple others. So we're gonna be reaching out here shortly and
That's great.
seeing if we can get some bids to perform that work.
Awesome. Thanks. Anything else? All right. Legislative review, we have the F A M L I ordinance for second reading.
Okay, so second reading for the family, family and medical leave insurance. There's, nothing has changed since I presented it at the last meeting. I still have had two comments to encourage an opt out decision. And then in hearing from other municipalities, it does seem like most municipalities are opting out of the program. If you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Policy for our mass bonus for first reading.
Good afternoon. So we are here for the first reading of the policy for our amendments. We met a couple of weeks ago for the work session and you all recommended zero percent of mass bonus for the condos, inns, hotels and lodges. We did do some research on other mountain resorts. We tried to make a comparison table as best we could since it obviously isn't really apples to apples. So that table is in your memo for your review, but otherwise, we wanted to point out one other thing. There's the policy 24R in our current code, which requires one to 35 square feet of gross floor area to be for meeting rooms and rec leisure amenities. So the, if we go to a zero percent mass bonus, they'll be required to use a lot of density for that. So just wanted to point that out and then we're here to answer any questions.
All right. Questions first. Comments?
You know, I guess we could discuss that one to 35. I, I don't know that we need to keep that or not, but I feel strongly that, and I appreciate you guys working with it. I, I just hear from the citizens over and over and over and over that, that they don't want, or you know, the crowding, the, the building, massive buildings, et cetera, et cetera. So I personally would like to see us eliminate even the relative, the negative points for the mass bonuses. I'd like to see it in the absolute and just go zero mass bonus across the board. That the density is the density and as it's owned is what's built and just eliminate the, the, any bonus for any type of building.
Or any use. Okay.
Would be my personal preference and, and it really comes from, well, my, my personal feelings, but also I hear over and over and over and over from people in the community that that's what they want as well. The one to 35, I, you know, I think that that, I'd be fine leaving that to the developers and, you know, if that's up to them, what kind of property they want to build. But I don't know how the rest of council feels, but I feel pretty strongly about zero mass bonus for any type of bill.
For anything. How's everybody else feel about that?
Special situation, it could always come test through a development agreement. So all the more reason to eliminate the bonus.
What is, what is the history on 24R and, you know, that one to 35?
I think at one point, you know, probably way back when the, we were developing into a resort community and we were worried about, you know, just
We wanted them to have
Yeah, we wanted, we wanted to be a legit resort community and that was like a to make sure that this buildings weren't being slapped up and they were using all the density to have exterior walkways and other things. But, you know, over 50 years, we've evolved to the point where probably customers demand that, that type of stuff. So it isn't like where we have to enforce it. You know, we were talking about that earlier and that was probably also the genesis of the, the mass bonus. We're
Okay, getting ready?
Yeah.
And what about the relative?
I don't have strong feelings on that.
Rankin?
Agree with Dick.
All right. All right. So let's get rid of the requirement for 35 square feet of gross floor area for every one square foot and, and get rid of the relative policy also. Or bonus.
Or bonuses for other, all of the other uses.
Good.
Well, then wait, this won't be ready for tonight.
No, well, that's fine. We didn't.
Pull this off the agenda?
We're gonna have to, to add, that's, that's a big change. So.
Something to add? Yeah, just something to add. Um, this may be fine for you guys if go this route, but I just did want to bring up in the historic district, that mass bonus is one of the things that has, in the past, at least incentivized some of these rehabilitations of historic structures. Not saying that they wouldn't do it without it. But I just wanted to bring that point up to you because I'm sure we'll hear from some of the architects, et cetera, about that, that that's, that's an important incentive to, you know, restore our historic buildings.
One of the problems with it is you end up getting historic buildings that are rehabilitated, but the thing that's attached to them is always so much bigger. I mean, I really do think we've screwed parts of the historic district up by allowing some of the secondary buildings attached to historic structures, you know, so.
They've become secondary to the
Yes.
Almost every one. I can't think of one that hasn't been like
Yeah, and we did do those revisions of the standards a couple of years to address some of that, but you're right, the mass is still there.
Mass is really what drives it in the end.
I think it's a great thing to consider, but I'm comfortable with that.
Everybody else comfortable with where we're going?
Comfortable.
Mark, thank you.
But when there is a note in the code about the exemptions for employee housing, is that something we would then, because there is the, there's a 30% for apartments and boarding houses or something? So if we drop that to zero, do we want to keep the exemption for employee?
For like common areas for employee housing.
We have you, we have utilized that bonus on some of our
Yeah, and our town projects have, we've utilized it.
I'm okay having that exemption for workforce housing.
Okay. There be any support for that exemption in the historic district or does it sound like we don't want to continue down that path of how things have gone with renovations? Because I worry about what Mark said there, like there's a trade off, right? Of like, does it stay decrepit or does it get redone so it lasts another hundred years?
Redone, like the one behind the library redone?
Oh, snap. That's a whole nother can of worms.
My thought is if you own a piece of property that is now worth a lot of money in the historic district, I would assume that you would fix it up. I mean, there, there are very few decrepit buildings in the historic district anymore. Most of them have been fixed up. That is not cheap property.
Nope.
In Breckenridge, so.
I, I hear what you're saying, Todd, but I think, you know, I think we roll it back and then let's give it a year or so and see what happens or a year or two. And if we, in a couple of years, we need to revisit because right now, a lot, so many of our historic buildings are becoming secondary to the massive thing behind them.
Yeah, I'm just walking down Harris Street in my head. So yeah, that makes sense. Go.
I'm not sure I understand the reasoning to exempt employee housing. I mean, I do understand that employee housing is critical and that we want to sort of maximize our capability to house people in the community. But I guess my concern is, is that if what we're talking about is these areas are getting too big, over programmed, I guess I just, I don't think that employee housing is not, I think you can still feel that from employee housing as well. And the surrounding, you know, units still feel that.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, that's a valid point.
It is.
I think you could certainly see that layer. The other side of that coin that I think about is like every, everything we can do to make employee housing better and the experience here for the employees, like I'm personally okay with some over programming if it keeps employees here a little bit longer, right? So I could, I'm in support of the exemption for the employee side. And then certainly we could call it up if we, if we thought, hey, this is getting way too big.
I don't think you're gonna change the size of an employee unit because if you look at Alda Verde, we, I mean, it's, you still have to have interior hallways. I mean, that's the access point. You can't get away from it. It'll just cost us more density out of our bank. So you're not gonna change the, I don't think the size of the units unless we only had X amount of density, then we'd have to build a smaller unit, building, yeah, to account for that extra hallway, interior hallways are primarily probably what's eating up unemployed housing. It's anything within interior hallway, right?
Yeah, and end of the day,
We're not building
what you do is you, you'd incur more negative points for, for not being mass or you wouldn't meet the mass. And it would still be a council decision since it's a town project, if you wanted to pass it, even though it didn't meet the, that, that requirement in terms of mass.
Right.
It's just that in the past, we've, we've been able to get to the finish line with a passing point analysis, may not be able to do that on computer projects.
I do think we should strive to be, have a passing point analysis. I don't want us to set us up to not have a passing point analysis, but I guess
You just have to make, you just have to change the design.
You can get there.
Yep.
On the exemption, are we gonna leave one in there or not for employee housing?
I'm a no.
Excuse me, mayor, do we need, we went from one policy issue to three tonight. Do we need more information on these? I mean, this, it seems like maybe we have more work to do before we make a decision on this tonight. I don't know. You got the historic district, the exemption, and then the original thing was the
These are all old issues that we've
Okay, alright.
worked on for years. So I, I'm not feeling that way.
That's, that's great.
I appreciate you bringing it up, but I'm not feeling that way.
I would stay consistent. We're seeing more and more, hopefully, private development employee houses, housing. So I think we should all be treated to the same standard and I would remove the bonus.
And development agreement kind of makes all that no anyway, right? Like that, everything kind of goes out the window as soon as the development agreement's done. Is that right?
So you're saying we could go with what Carol just said in, but we still have the flexibility down the road if the employee housing unit is something that we approve, that we can amend that.
Or if our private developers doing something that we're for, but it doesn't work in the code.
With Jay's interpretation, I agree with Carol.
All right. So I'm not hearing full support for keeping any housing exemption or anything to do with the historic district. So we'll just, we will pull this off the agenda tonight for the evening and we'll go back and amend it to take out the mandatory 135.
Thank you.
All right, Hitor IGA.
That's Venus.
Everybody here, that's what they like to call it.
The kingdom.
It's either Hitor or Wayside.
Hello, sure.
Alright, Hitor.
Hitor.
At the DOC C meeting, they they either that or they could go with Heitford, didn't they say that?
Yeah.
Only once out of my mouth.
I said a couple of times, really loudly.
In different voices.
In a different voice, yeah.
First, this is Matt Venus. He is joining the housing division as our sort of manager of apartments, asset management, keep eye on our property managers, since we have a lot of apartment complexes now and also general compliance and monitoring enforcement of deed restrictions. So.
Awesome.
Hey, welcome.
But before you, it's the resolution that would authorize the execution of the intergovernmental agreement with Summit County in regard to Hitor or whatever we end up calling this project. And the county has actually already signed the IGA, but the IGA spells out the terms of our partnership with the county. And basically, it's a 50 50 project where we're agreeing to share in half the cost each and half the revenue each. And on the last page of my memo, we talked a little bit about the things that are going on right now to get this complex open for tenants this winter. So there's quite a bit that's underway currently. But then we're not really thinking about any significant remodel or change to the building right now, just some fixes and minor repairs so that we can occupy it. But long term, there will be some plan created for ultimately a redo of that as it's aging. But this is really just, um, we split the project 50 50 with the county and anxious to get some people in there.
Awesome.
Uh, how, do we know how it's gonna be, you know, run? Are we gonna keep the communal kitchen?
Yeah, well, right, right now, you know, what we're doing is actually tomorrow, we're meeting with the property management manager. I think it will probably be Quorum. Quorum is managing the apartments and the hotels that the county already purchased in other parts of the county. So they're pretty familiar with dealing with a common kitchen, at least for a little while. They know how to manage that. We're thinking there will probably be an onsite manager that is an employee of the county to make sure people kind of are living within the rules and getting along, especially when there's common space.
In each room, will it be like a refrigerator or hot plate?
Yeah, no hot plate, but you'll have a refrigerator, you'll have a microwave, tea kettle, obviously. We don't want people full on cooking in their units, but whatever they could cook in a microwave is gonna be fine. One of the issues is it's limited, you know, it's an old building with a electrical system that can't take too much. And the same with, you know, same with the septic systems. We do have to limit our use of it for, until we upgrade it.
And there will be an, I, I've been getting a lot of questions about this. And there will be an onsite manager.
That's
And are we going to allow pets?
Oh, yeah. Pets for sure. The rent will be a little bit higher if you have a pet. It's 800 a month if you is $50 a month for the pet. So there is a pet rent and your deposit will be a little bit higher if you have a pet. But, you know, there's single occupancy units. So what we're doing is, you know, it's, they're going to be limited to town of Breck employees and Summit County employees. And it's one employee plus one dependent at the max. So potentially you could have two people in those units if it's a dependent of the employee.
Significant others, spouses.
Yep.
Dependent.
Oh, dependent. I thought, okay, but you can't have a spouse and a child.
And it, and that has to do with the septic system capacity.
Speaking of the septic, who is, I know it says sharing 50 50, but when we're connected to town water and to county upper blue sanitation, is that split as well? Or is it like, oh, we'll take care of the water, they'll take us?
This agreement is we're splitting everything 50 50.
And we're working on some, I'm sorry, there's some great grant opportunities for they kind of specialize in kind of creative approaches to, you know, something like this where you're taking something that historically hasn't been used for this and turning it into a workforce housing project. There's some grant opportunities we're really targeting to get the money to hopefully, because it's over a million dollars to get it hooked up the water. It's true. So.
And then housing will pay back the water district and the county will pay the water district the other.
The water fund. Yeah, we have to keep the water fund whole. I mean, I guess we'll have to have the conversation with the waterfront because typically they give us a 50% break for affordable housing. So, but we'll pay them back and keep them
Yeah.
At the 50%, yeah. But lots going on right now, just to get it ready for occupancy, you know, in terms of getting all the units checked and furnitures all in and wifi and utilities and
Is it gonna be on aloe?
We've got to figure out how to, we've got to get aloe laid along with ditch. The biggest challenge is crossing them.
Highway.
Night.
Yeah.
So otherwise it'd be, it wouldn't be that hard.
Yeah.
We're gonna see if there's any way to use dishes or something maybe to get it up there. I don't know. I think Kristen's looking into that a little bit. I know we're close. We just gotta get, we could go out there and make a cut in the road overnight.
Yeah, we could have a communal wifi, a little shed that they walk across the street.
Great. Thank you. Welcome.
Yeah.
Entrada, annexation petitions, sufficiency.
Can you hear me? Yes, Mayor Council, this is a resolution that has, it's a procedural formality under the state statutes. It's doing two things. One is confirming that, that the petition for annexation that was submitted with the clerk is sufficient and staff recommends that you approve it for that reason. And then it's also setting the hearing date for the annexation and development agreement. First reading will be October 25th and the second reading and the public hearing will be November 8th. Do I have that? Yes. If you have any questions, let me know.
I think there, could you clarify for the council that this in no way commits them to approving? I mean, they still have the development, the other development agreement and all those things that they can work through.
So as I mentioned, first reading for you to consider whether to move forward, annexation and the development agreement, it will be running contemporaneously, including at the same time, the idea is to rezone the property. And that will be October 25th. So yeah, this is just, like I said, a procedural formality that doesn't commit you one way or another.
So does that mean it wouldn't commit us to like, in his letter, some of the things that they wrote in the letter, we're not agreeing, like to his rent structure and that kind of things?
Um, I guess I'm not sure what letter you're referring to.
The packet. For the record, they state in the letter from the attorneys from Oden and Johnson.
Oh, I, right.
At, down near the bottom says, set monthly rent for each unit at a cost no more than 250 per square foot adjusted for inflation that has occurred since January 1, 2022. Well, in our meeting, July 20, they stated rent will be no more than 250 per square foot with a 3% increase.
Yeah, no, no.
It's, I just wanted to say for the record that that's incorrect.
It's a good point and I can probably answer this, but Julia might be better suited. We are, we just received drafts of the development agreement, which we are responding to. And of course, we are asserting the position that town council has already asserted. So no, we will not, if for any reason something substantive like that was not dealt with at a staff level, it would come back to council. Julia, do, did I cover that pretty? Okay.
Yeah. And I think the other thing we've said over and over about that 250 number is we want it to include utilities.
Okay.
For Julia, while you're working on that. Great. Awesome. Thank you.
Is there a second part to this letter? The packet?
Yeah.
It says and.
There must be a second page.
Possible, but I didn't include the whole thing. I, we had some issues. That's just the sufficiency, this is just the sufficiency resolution for the annexation portion. And I can, I thought it was all in there. Is it not in order in the scanned version?
There's a page missing off this letter from his attorneys. And I, I don't know that this letter should have even been included since it's really, doesn't have anything to do with the
Submitted for the, for the, for the annexation. I don't know. I mean, that was what they submitted to us.
I just, I think our concern is this letter that there's only one page of it because the last line ends with and, and then
They could be referring to this, could they?
No, because they're
Take a look.
Can you? Because there should be a signature too. I just, I do not, I want to make sure that they don't come back and say, but all this stuff was in this letter that you guys read and you didn't say anything about it. So.
That is not going to happen. I promise you, we can take a look at what's in there and follow up later. We, we've been very, very clear with asserting the town council's position and if, if there is any issue, it will come back before you.
Fair enough. Managers report, public projects update. Yeah.
Hi.
Not that big.
In for
Very, very Missing a light year, but so I don't have anything to add. Thanks for coming on the walk of the dam. It was great. So I don't have anything to add. Thanks for coming on the walk of the dam. It was great.
Oh, like the, uh, Park Avenue is functioning well now that the two outside lanes are open and they're working on the inside, so.
We're happy with how everything's progressing. Everything should be on schedule for completion.
Across Coin Valley.
I was gonna say, it's cool to see stuff driving across Coin Valley. I drove by the other day.
Three one driver, is it just?
You gotta work there.
You need a hot hat. Oh, yeah. Okay.
Getting reports of people driving over there on the weekends. Now I know.
Oh, that wasn't me. I do now.
So it looks like there's just this last segment of the river to.
To connect.
Together.
By next Friday, we should have everything in the new built portions.
Sweet.
Amazing.
Beautiful.
Just can't thank them enough after.
It's cool.
Going to Mountain Towns last week and.
That's a cool picture there.
You know, tracing the droplets of water. It's pretty cool to see the good work.
And then they'll be back next year to do the landscaping, the full revegetation.
So terrific workforce housing area.
It's open space you're looking at right there. Careful.
No, but this is nice to have right next to our workforce.
Yeah, it's with Todd Rakin's, the Ferris wheel's going.
I won't ask for a paved path there.
Have a projected date for Coin Valley? Uh, if you were to guess, I know it says October.
It all depends on the asphalt. Columbine is subcontracted to go over there and pave. We are hoping it is by October fifteenth, but it's a little bit weather dependent. It could delay a lot of things.
That was that for coin?
Yeah.
Cool.
That's what we're targeting, but we wanna give ourselves till the beginning of November, just in case.
Great job. Thank you.
Hey, stay there. Come on now.
Oh.
So when we talk about, uh, you'll notice on mobility, we're gonna jump in and Matt provided a summary of the. Usage on the parking structure that you asked for. I just want to point out, and one of the reasons I asked Shannon to stay here was, um, when you look at that second page of that. You'll see that all, there's a, a lot of what's driving those big expense numbers on there are, were. Are related to electricity and the snow melt system. And so we kind of took that first winter to really try to get a plan and figure out how to dial in that thing. So that it, what we weren't running at full bore all the time, right?
Yeah, there were some errors in the programming for the mechanical system that had to be adjusted. So it was running more than it needed to for the snow melt. So that gas huge usage and the cost of that will.
Yeah, so.
Calm down next year. Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're, uh, yeah, we're hoping that we can, you know, we're really, um, I mean, six hundred and forty thousand is a lot of expenses. Uh, for that thing over a course of a winter season. And so the more we can fine tune and control some of those expenses, that, that's the goal of ours.
We share that expense?
That expense comes off the gross revenue before we then distribute what's, what we call the net revenue after the expense. So.
Okay.
And because of that energy use, we already committed a million dollars to the rim plan.
Uh, we haven't put any money there yet, so. That fund is not set up yet.
Do the good work.
But. Wanted to clarify that. Any other questions for Matt relative to the parking structure, operation of it, et cetera, usage? Again, and I think we want to see those usage numbers. What do we have, Matt? Forty something percent average?
Yeah, forty eight percent.
Yeah, and we know weekends were good most of the time.
For the summer, or we talk just summer?
Uh, this is just winter, ski area, winter season. Summer's been really weak because it looks like a construction.
Right, right.
Because it is.
It is.
Yeah.
Get in there. We made more money in the summer when it was a dirt parking lot than we are this summer with it.
It's hard to get into.
Yeah.
How's our plan for getting people to stay? So we are, uh, working through ideas on that still. Um, Brock Park has a few interesting ideas to kind of get people to hang out a little bit longer. Um, we have other suggestions, but we're not sold on anything yet. So, um, we're coming up with some ideas, possibly discounts as people stay longer or whatnot, so.
Have we toyed with, uh, free after three, or are we still concerned about egress? We have once the roundabouts complete.
Yeah, so we discussed, we're still doing, um, per hour after three P M, uh, fifty cents. So it's still a pretty reasonable number. Um, but I do think that we could explore the idea of more free after three if we wanted to.
Cause that'll capture workforce. I think there's a number of workforce that just doesn't like paying anything.
Right. I'm more worried about people not leaving and then going downtown.
I think both. I mean, I agree with you completely, but I, I would like to see us do both. If, if we think egress can handle it, egress and ingress of the.
Yeah, I think our intention should be to keep people after five P M. So whatever we can do to, to do that would, wouldn't help us all.
Yeah, and the free after three would be more driven to workforce in my mind. It would be that night crew come in and just park there and don't circle town trying to find the sweet spot.
Yeah. The other thing I would caution is I, I, you know, as Shannon designed the parking structure, I think that we do need to give it time to be done as engineered. So they're right in, right out. This is the first time we're gonna be using that. So I think that's gonna make a difference in the timeliness of egress. Um, so.
That's why I counted it as a question and not a statement.
Right.
It's worth discussing because, I mean, if we were, if we're successful, I mean, we have nine hundred and one. Nine hundred space, over nine hundred spaces. If we're successful, then let's say we keep fifty percent of those people to stay there. That means we still got over four hundred spaces setting vacant. And why not utilize them?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's why we, that's why we decided to let employees park there, you know, towards the end here, and we'll reevaluate that. Does us, rarely would we ever fill all nine hundred spaces in the summer. So why not? If we can park a hundred employees with a permit, let's use it.
Yeah.
Uh, I know Shannon would be elbowing me right now because if we, all we're doing is making it easier for people to drive when we do that. But those people are driving anyways, probably. Right?
They are.
And they're, so I don't know if it's. You know, if it's something we're gonna do, we should think about it as we're getting ready to put our employee parking stuff out this fall, right?
And maybe we wait a year. I mean, I'm not pushing super hard. I just asked the question. I don't want to forget about it, you know? But we might need to let the roundabout work first and launch it in January.
Maybe we do that. And then we'll just reevaluate maybe like January and see.
Yeah.
Probably want to observe how, how it works with the full build out.
Yeah.
That would also be my suggestion. Shannon will give me a high five after the fact.
I just, yeah, I just don't want to forget about it.
Yes.
I do think ultimately, once we figure it out, there's the opportunity there, like Greg said.
I have a question. Hey, so on that, on our tweet, talked about that we estimated that thirty nine percent of traffic through the tunnel comes, uh, through Tiger Road. How do we know it's the same traffic?
It's not.
It's not.
Yeah, we, we can't tell that. They could be coming from Vale Pass, Steamboat, really even Loveland Pass. So we, we don't know that number, but.
But he's taking credit for it.
I'm not gonna hold you to it. I'm just curious.
Here. Other questions? Thank you.
And I would say also that Matt, you're doing a great job keeping our, um, fleet staffed up because we heard, you know, all around us, there are some real challenges. But you've been doing really awesome. So thanks for that.
You're welcome. I think most of that goes back to Kristen. She's in charge of the fleet, so.
About transit or?
Transit and, no, yeah, transit.
Yeah, so fleet is our mechanic.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
But.
They're important.
They're all important. All the employees are important.
Yeah. We're still, I mean, what, how are we looking going into winter right now for our drivers?
Added three more today, so we're actually moving pretty well. We're, we're looking pretty good. Um, obviously those can change overnight, so, um, I.
We're gonna be short though.
We're still short of time being, I, I think.
Do we have the drug test?
Yes.
Why?
Well, C D L commercial.
Oh, that's, it's a state thing. It's not our own.
Federal thing, it's not even a state. So we have to pre-employment, and then we also have to random, so.
Okay, I really agree with that.
I don't see you driving a bus.
Do it anyway. No, I just thought it may be, it'd be a lot easier to get some more drivers if we didn't have to.
How did we leave the Riverwalk master plan dumpster enclosure kind of planning? Where did that get left off? I know that we had, it's kind of a chicken or the egg kind of thing where we want to redo the enclosures before we talk about Riverwalk. But we kind of want to talk about Riverwalk before we redo the enclosures.
But we did agree, and correct me if I'm wrong, we did agree that the one enclosure needs to go down at, uh, towards Watson, up that alley for one hundred north. And that's the first one that's in for next year, right?
Mm hmm.
So, uh, we've heard loud and clear that if, you know, if we can get access to an enclosure. So that it's not on the alley, we should always look at that. That would, that'll be very difficult at that end because we don't own the land there. So, uh, but we are looking as to how to minimize any intrusion into the alley for pickup there. And at the same time, then we have to start planning for future ones and how we're gonna look at those, et cetera. But right now, the one that's budgeted, the new enclosure will be going in a hundred north.
And building on that with the Riverwalk, we are going to be bringing Norris back in for some work with council and goal setting. The Riverwalk as, as the first step.
We have to pay triple.
And see how that goes to sort of get some consensus on what the, what the vision is so that we could move forward with some design. I have not scheduled that.
They're gonna be pretty.
For that dumpster, was that gonna go right on Watson?
You don't know. We need, I need to figure out how big it needs to be.
Yeah.
And then how the trucks are gonna access it. And then we'll bring a couple of options to you of where it could work down there.
Yeah, I walked that zone and looked at the parcel overlay map. It's, it's tight right on Watson. So I look forward to seeing some options. Thank you.
Private land.
Yep.
Is that building getting demoed? The, the fly, is it fly?
Fly across the street here?
We don't know that yet.
No, the, the one across from that, on the, um.
Spoon over.
That's it.
Uh, well, eventually, yeah, it will eventually, but it's, I mean, we're not tearing it down until we have a plan of what we're putting there.
Definitely don't.
There are still housing people in there. It's four apartments.
Still there.
Does that answer the question, Jay?
Anything else?
Was he gonna run it by Matt Protem?
Believable sustainability plan update.
Um, we, that's gonna be an agenda item on here, but we don't have any updated on this meeting. So sometimes we will, sometimes we won't.
So how, let me ask a question then. You don't have to come up here if you don't want. Um, how are we gonna start pushing out this, trying to get people to take an alternate form of transportation one day a week?
Excited to do it. We can do it for all of our socials. So, and we'll do it on our Twitter as well, so.
Okay. Um, I'd like to, yeah.
Think, yeah, I think we need to make a big deal out of this if we're gonna really push it and try to encourage us, all of us and staff and everything.
Yeah. Well, so I was talking to, um, one of the council people in Salida. They use a, an app that they developed called. Tara, Tara something or other. Yeah, she told us about that. I can't offhand.
Challenger.
Challenger, I mean. Uh, anyway. Um, yeah, I don't know if we, we can, you know how we've done stuff at the, with the Free Ride too, over time, we've done, you know, we did that Millionth Rider. I don't know, maybe when we get around to, to kicking off the, the season with Free Ride, we could do something there with a, I don't know. I loved it when we did the coffee and donuts on that, and we wrote, we all wrote a, wrote a route and talked to people was great. So maybe we, um, maybe we could figure something like that out. Yeah.
Before you, I'd like to talk about a name, not now, but rather than.
Name.
Oh, so I'm just, this, let's get creative.
Save the planet.
Whatever, we'll figure something out.
Jeffrey's challenge.
No, I, I like, honestly, I think, I like the mayor's challenge better than the council's. There's a lot of hate.
I think it's, isn't it listed in the plan?
It is.
As the mayor's challenge?
With that picture of me where I look heavier than I currently am.
I like that better than.
It's an old picture.
You don't want to say anything.
Yeah, see?
See? It's exactly what you would say. All right. I was gonna say childcare.
There's nothing in your packet in terms of minutes from meetings, but.
Noticed that.
Wanted to be here in case you have any questions about any of our projects or any.
Anybody reach out to you after M T twenty thirty about housing?
Um, I know, um, Jesse had told me somebody might have wanted a tour at.
Well, Mayor, Tori, I connected Tori wanted to talk to them on.
There's a couple of other people too that were asking.
Nobody ever.
Right, I handed out your info, so.
We were ready to do a tour if they wanted it. Yeah.
Have you met with that company that, uh, uh, Felton is working with?
We're meeting with them tomorrow, actually.
Have we talked to them before?
Yeah, met with them a couple of times. Um, you know, it's a different way of fabricating, fabricating housing. Um, so we're kind of interested in seeing, cause obviously we can reduce our cost to produce units. That's a good thing. Um, so we'll talk to them and see what they're thinking about tomorrow.
Excellent.
I was curious if you could, um, when then Trotta stuff moves forward and they've got that like calculation in there that's two fifty per square feet and then blah de blah de blah. Um, will you help us understand what that conversion to A M I is when we see that again? Please, so that just, we've never done it this way, and so I'm not really clear on how that compares.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see how it does compared to relying on A M I.
Yeah. I mean, it's around a thousand dollars a unit.
Yeah, and you know, A M I goes up in some years, down some years. So if you rely on A M I, it's not necessarily a great metric. So I think it would be interesting to see how those compares.
Those are studios. They're studios, right? I don't think they're one bedroom.
Studios.
I think.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm happy to look at that.
Thanks.
Back to that mayor's challenge thing you're talking about real quick.
Thanks.
Thank you, Lori.
Thanks, Lori.
I'd love to see some cool incentives in there, like get really creative, whether it's, you know, passes to golf or front row on childcare. You know, if you walk X number of days into town for work and like really get super creative to kind of really drive more of that. What you're talking about there with the boots and bikes.
Rex and a pass, something like that.
Yeah, and do it over, do it over like a year, or it's like measured by the year so that we just get really good traction there.
Yeah, we can invite them in when Jay and I are doing a, a arm routine.
So they could watch.
Hmm.
That's, and that's with that app that they, so I'd end up giving, giving money, and I like.
I was looking for it.
Giving stuff. Yeah, rec dollars are great, or just, I mean, we, Matt'll come up with some good stuff, I'm sure.
Cool. Thank you.
Community reports.
Shannon had a couple of, uh.
I think they were just the social equity. Yes. But I'd highlight that we had, um, the last two meetings, great presentations from community partners, Mountain Dreamers and the smart team. And the commission had some really great input and explored some potential partnerships. Also, there's a spot open currently, and Burke and team did an incredible job pushing that out. So I think we have something like ten applicants and they all are incredible. So it's gonna be a really tough decision when we get to that. We haven't scheduled the interviews yet. Um, and then last meeting, um, we had Open Space and Trails present the idea for the accessible trail. And the commission was so. And the commission was so enthusiastic and there was unanimous support for not just that trail. But continuing picks for, um, future wheelchair friendly trails.
What are, what are next steps for that, Carol?
I think, I don't know if we want to talk about it now or when open space comes up.
Sounds better now.
Yeah, um, Todd, do you want to give the update from BOSAC? Or I don't know, we probably have some staff questions on.
Yeah, I can kind of give the quick little run through on, um, um, basically there's a, an outdoor equity grant. For the Ryland dredge, it's, um, it sounds like it's getting submitted or planned to get submitted. It's due at the end of the week. Um, and, and staff basically, um, was, was trying to find. The ability to have this equitable, inclusive and accessible trail to a historic structure in the heart of our open space. Um, so they targeted Ryland dredge, um, as that trail, um, to make it accessible by wheelchair. They thought they would need some crusher finds, a little bit of grading, some bump outs on the bridge there to get, you know, basically from the road. Uh, into the dredge, um, and need to bump out stool, bikes to pass. ADA parking is a requirement of, of doing this project. Social Equity Commission supports it, was one of the notes from yesterday. For parking, um, staff had suggested two spots. They were thinking initially in the Ryland dredge parking lot. And then there was some discussion about maybe putting that on the south side of the road.
Yeah.
And maybe where the TPs are there.
People park all the time anyway.
Yeah, exactly. Um, I'd like it for the record that Chris Tenel mentioned he wanted to pave in, 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 in French Gulch. So that was his suggestion there to add the two spots. Um, the commission mentioned that they, um. They thought they'd need some extra signing to, to encourage folks to not go ripping through there on bicycles. It is important to have the trail be wide enough through there. So staff has done a tremendous amount of research on this spot. The, the, the grant applications due here by the end of the week. It sounds like Julie McCluskey is in, in strong support of this. And she's co-sponsor of this bill for the outdoor equity grants. So there was, it was a five to two vote for the Ryland dredge. But it, there was definitely some concerns there from, um, from, from BOSAC. About it's kind of a short fuse here, you know, and then we're not really getting time to evaluate other options. So that's kind of what I've got from BOSAC is, it's in here.
Yeah, and any other layers on there that you want to hit?
I don't know if we can, can we create, have we checked in to see if we can even create legal parking along the county road?
It's not technically a county road. Um, it's the whole B and B parcel. Through it, there's no road right of way in that area, so it's just. We haven't talked about the south side of the road that just came up last night.
Council had some concern about increasing the capacity on the parking lot, which you would have to do to accommodate a couple of handicapped. Although they would only be for handicap usage, but.
Would that, would we even increase the number of parking spots?
You'd have to.
Well, you'd have to enlarge the parking lot to accommodate those and you'd have to make some improvements within there. Uh, but it wouldn't necessarily increase the number of, you know, it, you would increase the number of spaces. But, um, at least two of them would be designated for hand, you know, handicap placard required. So it's not like you'd be inviting.
Adding more spots.
I have a, I have some, you know, I mean. I think, I like to measure twice and cut once. And when we have to make this decision within four days. Um, you know, I, I have, you know, I just read it last night when I get back to town. It's gonna be some major grading that needs to be done. If you think about that, how in widening of the trail through that little Aspen forest. There's just a lot of issues in that as you cross the bridge. Do we need a new bridge? Do we need to widen that bridge? How much will that cost? And how much of that hundred and fifty K will that eat up? As well as what type of grading, once you go over the bridge to get up towards, uh, the dredge, you know, that's a pretty steep. I've been pushing my father-in-law around a wheel, on a wheelchair for the last five days and. Uphill on crusher fine, you know, I think you might need a boardwalk and, and also that hill from, you know, as, as you cross the bridge. You get flat and you climb up, you'd have to do a switchback or something like that. So it's. You know, I, I would like to s, you know, get some of these numbers before we, we sign off on that thing. And I don't know if we can within four days. And also I'd like to think of, uh, a place that's, um, less, uh. Less busy with, uh, with mountain bikers and, and, you know, and, and, you know, other, other use, other trail users. Not necessarily hikers, but mountain bikers, you know, people coming off of Turks, coming off a side door. Um, so yeah, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to entertain some other places, find out where it might be easier. Place that already has a, a flat parking lot that we don't have to, uh, expand. I mean, I, I think of, I think of, uh, the, near the Jesse or, uh, um, the Tiger dredge. Uh, you know, I know the Tiger dredge is busy, but there's a little back way that we used to ride in the old days. It's totally flat on the west side of the parking lot. So I think, yeah, I, I personally, I would not sign off on this. Till I know all these answers.
Yeah, and I guess I don't see this as an either or. I mean, French Gulch is one of the most prized areas of our open space network. And we don't have an accessible trail. We know we need a wheelchair accessible trail. And I think this location has been well vetted by staff. Um, they are working with the B O E C. So we're hearing from the user group we're trying to serve that this would meet those needs. And what's even better is we do have the Ryland dredge there, which is one of those historical assets that we want to interpret and celebrate. And the historical resource management plan, we do call out French Gulch as an area of focus there. So within this trail, not only do we have partnerships with B O E C, but Breckenridge history. And it is an amazing asset. We all love to explore regularly. So I think letting another user group explore this is a no-brainer. And from impacts, it is a highly, it is a busy area. There's families all the time. But we're talking about lots of bikers. There's some user conflict, but we do manage it. And we're talking about a quarter mile section.
So are you comfortable pulling the trigger on this before we know what it's gonna cost and?
I think it's largely, and I think staff has some preliminary numbers where it's not outrageous.
Cause we can't, we're not gonna replace the bridge or widen it because we can't.
We've had a lot of help from our engineers, which is fabulous on this. But, um, the idea is to keep the existing bridge, which, um, B O E C has checked to make sure that a wheelchair can safely get it down that bridge. Because of the length of it, it would require some bump outs just to allow a little passing area if there are bikes and other traffic moving through. Uh, we'd hope to not have to drop another support for those bump outs down into the, the ground, um, below. That would increase the cost another probably forty to fifty thousand. Um, if we can just do it. Without adding those structural supports, the total cost is around ninety to ninety-five thousand.
And how do you? Just wait. Bridge is not that long. I don't understand that. Why would we spend that money when people can just get off their bike and wait for the wheelchair to pass?
We, we would hope so, but we know there's a lot of traffic on that bridge and having some opportunity for passing is just a helpful thing.
What about, would you envision it as crusher fine or boardwalk or paved?
It, it would be crusher fine and it would need to be six feet wide. Um, Chris in engineering has given us some good specs on the grade, which is nearly there. There's a little bit of grading from the road down to the bridge itself, um, that would be crusher fine and six feet wide. But really the rest of the trail is, is really close to the grade that's appropriate for wheelchairs.
What, no. What about from, you get off the, you know, uh, when it climbs up to the dredge, that's, that's fairly steep on a mountain bike.
Are you talking about the first interpretive site?
Yeah, when you get out, you cross the bridge, you're heading to the south. And then you're, you're kind of crawling up, you're climbing up to what would be the, you know, the, uh, top of a, a Turks trail and, you know, yeah. But though actually the bottom of Turks trail.
So not quite that far up. So just to the south end of the dredge there to that little platform that, uh, Brett history has.
That's the first gear on a mountain bike. There's no way, um, you'd have to do some switchback or serpentine to get up that.
The overlook on the dredge rocks, not the overlook in the.
No, when, yeah, when you, when you're, you're heading, maybe we should do a site visit. But when you're heading or you cross, cross the bridge, heading south, you go through that, you know, that kind of flatter area. And then to get up to what used to be Caragene's cabin site.
It's not going that far.
Uh, it's just goes, there's.
Part there and then it's. It's before the little. Talking about, there's a left there.
We get to that overlook, you still have to climb up.
You gotta go up a little bit.
Really? Like to check it out, cause I. So.
Mostly dredge rock.
It is, yep. And, and we have the, the county contributing, um, at least twenty thousand to this project as well. It's, um, on their radar as well.
Were there others sites that were talked about?
Um, that's been the primary one to be able to, to capture the least amount of grading that we would have to do. To still get some views, some history, some opportunities for, um, kind of those open space values. Um, BOSAC had a lot of ideas last night from the dredge that's sort of buried along Wellington Road there in the trees, doing something there. Which, yeah, exactly right there, um, potentially a Tiger dredge, doing something more at the troll or behind the ice arena. Um, certainly in the McCain property is another opportunity where we can do a lot of planning, um, since there isn't an existing trail network there yet.
Was there any talk about the, um, the structure that got fixed up directly across from the B and B? Parking, you know, the.
Oh, the.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, there's a. Orbin?
Or.
You know, cause there's a sort of a long, it crosses the extenuate trail, but it doesn't. You know, you could build something that didn't use the. Scott?
Yeah, the issue we have with that is that that's has some of the hottest material.
Never mind that. How about, um, how about where you guys plotted the Mile of Rose? That's, that's fairly flat and that's, uh, scenic. And, uh, with this, a lot of parking, a lot of parking at the B and B.
We, we would still need some designated parking and just accommodating any road crossings with a slight ramp, you know, to get to the other side.
Don't you have to do that?
Yep.
Either way.
Yep, exactly.
So, but yeah, I mean, you know, that's, I just thought of that. The, my, you know, the Mile of Rose area, remember, uh. I've been skiing out there. It's really flat and it's actually signed, so.
Would we have hardscapes put down in the parking lot like pavement?
We were hoping to do recycled asphalt, which is a little bit, um, less expensive for us and we've done it before. That is what we used at the B and B trailhead, um, to do that and then striping, um, and appropriate signage for ADA spacing.
And how like, I guess one of my concerns is you put a couple of, uh, handicap parking spaces there. And that, that, that lot gets filled up on a Saturday by eight o'clock, right? People are parking in the ADA, uh, spaces. Is there any enforcement whatsoever that would go up there? Or are we just maybe setting enough more rules that people aren't gonna follow and we have no teeth, that have no teeth on them?
In, enforcement is, is always tricky and we have such great support in the sheriff's office, but they're pretty limited. Their, um, special ops folks do tons of backcountry enforcement for us, which we're so grateful for. Um, but, but it is a tough thing to.
That's not one that people tend to ignore when it comes and, you know, and, and people are not shy about calling and complaining. And, uh, which they shouldn't be about, you know, and somebody, sending somebody up there, uh, to enforce that. It's not that far, so.
And Jay, that was part of the.
Those are expensive. Those are hundred dollar tickets.
Part of the discussion on maybe trying to find two spots on that south side so that the wheelchair, the person in the wheelchair wouldn't have to cross the road. So you could, you could make just two ADA spots right there by the trailhead. Really easy access to getting engaged with the trail.
I, I'm, I'm concerned with the bridge. Um, you know, I think, you know, and I, I, I heard what Eric said. But I do think it's long enough where you get people coming down there at a fairly high velocity. And there is so many different uses already. Uh, I think we would increase the conflicts. To a point that would be difficult because I think even if you're on a bike and you're making, you know, you enter into that bridge and you throw on the brakes. You're still a quarter, three quarters away there. You can't get by. There's no other option other than flipping your bike around. And we'll walk here, you know, walking all the way back in order to allow for a wheelchair to go there. Like there's no squeezing by on that. I hear the bump outs, but, um, I would love to see this get explored a little bit further. Before I be in a favor of it.
We could also have some signage that made sure people knew. Because if you were going, I mean, the bridge is not so long that you can't see across it. So if you were going a reasonable speed and looking for other people coming in that direction, it seems like that would largely be avoidable. Not that it wouldn't ever happen.
There was also to piggyback and kind of augment what you're saying there, Kelly, was they were talking about chicanes as well. So some signage and then some chicanes to kind of slow the bikers down, you know, and obviously we have to be wide enough for the wheelchair to get through. But I think they were talking about, mentioned like both ends of the bridge there as a solution.
Do you know, if we chose another location, we wouldn't have to, we might not have to do any of that stuff. If we chose another location, we might have to not have to mess with the bridge. We might not have to expand the parking lot and worry about, you know, people parking in, in a handicap designated spot. Or the, the amount of grading that we'll have, would have to do to, and I, I think it's, you know, like you say, even you cross the road. You know, you go down that nice little single track through the Aspen forest, you know, that's, that's gonna take some, some work. And that's like I say, I, I don't know, may, maybe Carol knows better than I. She probably pushes her mother more than I, and her mother's probably lighter than my father-in-law. But, um, any sort of grade, you know, when I, when I, on crusher fine was, was a, was hard. And what's even more scary is when you're holding on to that thing that's going downhill.
Yeah.
Um, uh, so whatever, I, I'm, I would not, I'm not gonna, I would not support this until we know, answer all these questions.
And I think those are all valid concerns. The fact that we heard from the B O E C, we largely heard from this user group that yes, this meets their needs. And as to other locations, yes, let's keep exploring other locations. But the uniqueness of this with the dredge, with the vistas and French Gulch, which we all love, I'm fully supportive. And I think we're not adding a lot of pressure. We're adding access. And that's what this council committed to doing through the Social Equity Commission, through a lot of our efforts. And I think we should follow through with this effort and.
I'm in support of Carol. I, you know, I, I also agree we should continue looking because we should have more than one. You know, we, we need to be a fully accessible community. And our recreation is so important to all of the able-bodied folks here and, and we really need to open it up a little more. And it's time. I mean, we've talked about it and talked about it. It's just, it's, it's time to pull the trigger. You know, I, I'm surprised we didn't do the troll, ADA on the troll. Yeah, but that, that's not what this is. No, no, I'm just saying. Kind of contrived and.
So, um, if we, if we use the south side of the road for parking. Can we take the first part of the trail just down through the woods instead of to the, where the trail goes, you know?
Like, look at options and look at the lay of the land to see how we can do that and get the right, um, grades.
You know, instead of doing what you're saying, I mean, that Aspen stand is really nice. I'd hate to, I'd hate to widen that and cut a bunch of those aspens down. But going straight down where some people ride anyway to get back to, up to the road might be.
Okay, okay.
Be a, we can, well, you could, you could definitely then.
But do you know, we have a price tag on this thing before we sign off?
I mean, it sounds like it's most likely under a hundred thousand.
Mm-hmm. It, that's what we're hoping. If, if we have to drop a structural support down into the land, it might go up to one thirty, one forty. Um, we think to be competitive with the grant, the grant maximum ask is a hundred and fifty thousand. We think if we're under a hundred for our ask, then that, um, makes us a little bit more competitive.
We've got it funded with the grant. Well, I, yeah, I was, I was under the impression that one of the thoughts where we might have to build a new bridge, wasn't that talked about last night?
Well, I, I think some people brought that idea up. We'd prefer not to. If you had to do a new bridge similar to the prefab one that's near River Park and getting the span that we would need there. It would certainly require Army Corps. So that's something we don't have to do if we're not replacing that bridge now. Um, it, it's probably in the three to four hundred thousand. It's probably in the three to $400,000 range if we just went through the Army Corps and put in a new bridge.
So we can do the thing for 150,000, drop dead, no, no.
I support this project as well. I mean, if Bo, I don't have as much experience and if BoEC has been out there and says that it does work, I definitely want to support getting, you know, opening up our trail system. And I don't think it can be overstated what a special place French Gulch is. And I think Carol put that really well. So I, I, and also I guess, you know, the length of trail really does matter. This is not a super long segment of trail. It's very accessible in that form already. So I do think, um, I'm excited about it.
Checks a lot of boxes.
Yep.
I can't say it any better than Carol did. I'm in support.
Just me and Broom Hilda against it.
I'm, I'm for it under some conditions though.
Okay.
I do not like the bump outs on the bridge. I think it's a waste of money. I think there's other ways to do it that we can, if the, if a wheelchair fits on the bridge, then I think signage, listen, I, I get you, Jay, but the people that rip down there that, that rip so fast to that bridge, they need to slow down beforehand. Yeah, I ride that thing a, a lot. I mean, like all of us do, I rarely run into anybody there, you know? That's number one. Number two, I really would like a different start to it. If we're gonna park people on the side of the road, I'd like to go through the woods and not that little stretch of trail so that we can really divide something wide without taking down any of that Aspen stand. After that, it's just dredge pile. You can make that thing 15 feet wide and you're not really disturbing anything. So, you know, it's really just doing what I consider to be a wasteful spend on the bridge where we could, I think we can handle that a different way. And, you know, if we don't expand the parking lot, if we do it on the side of the road, I think that's a much better alternative and you get people that are parking there right now off the road because it becomes handicap only. And the, the.
Wonder though if it actually encourages, that, that's my concern is that when people see, oh, it's okay, there's signs for handicap people to park here, then they're just gonna line up behind. I actually prefer the extent, expand, expanded parking lot so that all the parking is contained. It's not on the riverside, so it's not in the water influence zone at all, so that you're not pushing gravel down there. I don't know how far it is to the stream there. But my preference is to expand the.
What about crossing the road? Is that an issue?
I mean, peak leafing season now, there's tons of cars.
Nobody's.
Have people come up left.
As far as getting across the road in a, in a wheelchair on a.
Yep, there'll be a, a bit of a ramp on the opposite side where the trail starts.
So maybe just the discussion of the parking area by staff and BOEC before that's implemented, I think would be best, but.
There you go.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Uh, financials.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, just a quick review of August. We're still running quite a bit ahead of budget on sales tax year-to-date, about, um, 8.6 million and also ahead of prior year of around 6 million. And same thing going with accommodations, still strong, 1.4 million over budget and ahead of last year. And ret, we're running ahead of budget so far year-to-date. We're down a little bit from year-to-date last year as some of the slow is starting to occur. If I look at net taxable sales, just as a general overview, we are still running about 40% higher than 2019 year-to-date, which is, is really strong. You can see here on the chart, we're about 18.6% ahead of 2021, but about double that for 2019. And just in general terms, looking at the, uh, various industries, I would say sectors related to this, we have started to see a decrease over the last three months. Summer months, I would say of our trends versus 2021. We are still running ahead of 2019 and when we're working through the budget, we're gonna start to, we'll have some of those assumptions built in for expectations going into 2023. But, um, I think with the economy and some of the other things going on, starting to see that slowdown.
Tell you right now that we are not budgeting at, um, what we expect would be an increase over 2022. Okay, because, I mean, what's carrying this $8 million is the four months of the year. It was huge. I mean, you know, 40, we're talking 40% increases in January and that. And so we see what's happening since then. And, uh, so where we've gone, typically we go in and do a 1% or something over projected for sales tax. We're, we're, um, you know, we're projecting a decrease. And it'll, I mean, we're up over 2019 obviously, but we'll have a decrease from 2022 for our projected 20, what we're budgeting for 23. A little bit, so.
And that's just basing on the, the trending we're seeing today. Yeah.
Which is wise, I think, looking at the economy.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think we, honestly, I, I really do think that even though this looks compared to 21, like, you know, things are really softening, I still think that 2019 is the benchmark for us. You know, I mean, 2020 and 2021 were completely aberrant years. And if you, if you look back, we are still massively busy. But I agree with, you know, the budget talk. I just, I don't want this to, to be like, oh no, you know, it's crashing. It's not. Just July, all net taxable at 72 million compared to 53 million in 2019 with a pandemic in between there. I think that's pretty solid, so.
It's direct.
It does. It's most of it. Any questions for Dave? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Hey, subdivision code amendment.
With the boss, we were together.
And we got flu shots too. I, I, I get, I did it. I got a little sick when I did it. No, three or four hours, I think you're gonna be, you'll be on your back. And don't worry, Kelly will fill in. Hi, Chris.
Good evening. Uh, we got, um, a revised consideration in regards to the, lot dimensions section of the subdivision code. Uh, we heard, uh, the feedback from Jay and I think the rest of the council. It really wanted to make sure that if we were giving a special allowance for, you know, a deviation from the standard shape that would be tied to something that was visually represented in the master plan, specifically where lot lines were depicted. So we, um, you know, uh, made some minor modifications to the language under section nine dash two dash four dash five, which is lot dimensions improvements in configuration. And then we also did make a, um, a minor modification to policy 39, which is the master plan section of development code, where it says the application shall include the following information. And we inserted under bullet seven, proposed conceptual subdivision lot lines to ensure that that's something that we get, um, for future master plans. But I'll be happy to take any questions or, uh, any further direction from the council.
You know, Chris, I, I really appreciate the efforts that were taken to clarify this. And just to, to bring it to planning commission's attention and bring it to council's attention that during the master plan in that nine dash one dash 1939A, uh, policy 39, that that was part of the thing that we are to look at or planning commissions to look at or staffs should be looking at. And that, uh, it's something that's called out in the staff report at that time. So I really appreciate your efforts and the work that you did.
No, I think it was a good suggestion that they kind of tighten the loop or close the loop on that.
Are there questions?
Thanks, Chris.
Awesome. All right. It's great. Thank you.
All right. Well, we'll bring a, a first, uh, reading for you at the next meeting.
Perfect. Chris, thank you so much.
Do staff reports while we're here before we go into exec session and other, any other matters? Eric, get that out of the way.
Yeah.
Do my town manager's.
That'd be great. Exec session?
It's added today.
It was added, Jeffrey.
Well, we're gonna take a quick five.
More stuff.
For Todd. Those Lululemons. They're tight. Get up and stretch.
Apparently the papers calling Peter Bocken.
Apparently the papers calling Peter Bocken.
You're the best of all of us at not driving.
Lexic, I'm handicapped.
I'm gonna get everybody's attention, please. Several important updates that. Okay, and because somebody's gonna ask me, well, what date was that? What did he tell us? Tomorrow, three thirty to five is the open house for Sally Barber mine stabilization. Remember? They try not, they don't want anybody driving up there. Three thirty to five tomorrow.
Anybody want to ride?
So if you're gonna go, I think they'd like to get some counsel up there during that time. You.
They're about four o'clock.
You got a email to see if you're interested in the FERC wine dinner on Wednesday, October fifth. We only have, we have ten seats. Yeah, I know it's.
It's the only time I can afford detail.
Uh, we need, you need to let Peyton know because if. Doesn't it? They're not listening. Well, doesn't, uh, doesn't use all the tickets, so we want to open it up to internally to few people.
October fifth. That's a great one. Dick did such a good job at that one. That is.
If it's you and your other, or just you by yourself, whatever, just so we know how many are used. All right, let us know soon, please. Then on October sixth at eleven AM, we're doing the Soul Center groundbreaking Thursday, the FERC site.
That's the next day.
Got the, uh, who's doing that Carter Park Friends of the Brequins Trails Appreciation Dinner? So do you have, you'll want council to stop by if they can?
When's that one?
It's Thursday Night Football that night, you know that?
Soul searching?
Is that Broncos?
Broncos play Thursday, October sixth.
So it's soul in the morning and then it's.
Yeah, then that's the Trails Appreciation Dinner at Carter Park that night, five PM to seven PM.
What time is the soul thing, ten?
Uh, soul is at eleven.
The, uh, if you're gonna go to the COO Summit Breakfast, you know, this. Kick off the ski season by the Summit Chamber Friday, October fourteenth, let us know, we have ten seats. For that too.
But day.
The fourteen.
October, Friday, October.
That's after our retreat, isn't it? Okay.
Have a retreat on the fourteenth?
No, it's.
That's a good one.
It's eleven.
The COO breakfast is a good one.
Yeah, if you haven't been to that, it's phenomenal.
I feel like that's being overstating.
All fired up for winter.
That's. Alright, I'm not done yet.
Phenomenal.
This is great.
Views are phenomenal.
While we, there's a, a cast, two day cast meeting, October twentieth and twenty first in Glenwood Springs, so typically it's. It's the mayor and Shannon and I go into these, Eric and, I mean, Carol and Dick have gone in the past. And Dick can't go to this one, I don't know if you can, but let us know if anybody's interested, we go down there in. October twentieth and twenty first. BTO Winter Preview, Thursday, October twenty seventh is eight AM here in the council chambers. Uh, and Wake Up Breck is November tenth, coffee shop, so we'll be doing handing out coffee mugs on the tenth. Pay your attention.
Peyton sent all that out.
Yeah, she, tell me she probably did already.
I'm sure she's.
Send a calendar, um, calendar.
Invites, yeah.
I like it when you click on your calendar.
She's listening, she's listening.
Well, you got anything else?
No.
Wow. Okay, uh, we didn't have any cast or MMC, but I will say again that, uh, Mount Towns was a huge success. I was super stressed out about that thing.
Proud.
I was stressed beforehand, I was worried because they did a great job in Park City, but our staff did a greater job. It was an, it was awesome, and really, I was a little worried about the, the, um, the key, sort of the keynote speaker. Because Jane Goodall was really good. He was better, I thought he was better though.
He was.
Really did, I thought, and he, not only was he better, but he was more timely and really more on point with what we do.
Facilities look good too.
Yeah, it did.
She the monkey lady?
She is, she's monkey woman.
We're commenting about all our different art facilities and everything, so.
It was great, staff just killed it, I'm just so impressed.
Yeah.
The embarrassing thing about it is our bathrooms.
Sorry, it was nice at least.
Yeah.
It was winter.
Yeah, it wasn't that bad, that one.
A guy named Peter McBride, he's a photographer for National Geographic.
Oh.
He did a tremendous presentation.
Oh yeah, what about the, like, they taped everything, will we ever get access to that?
Oh.
Okay. Yeah, any parts, but especially that.
Okay, open space, do you have anything to add to your hatred of handicapped?
I, yo, we get, no, I love, I love handicapped people. I know, I wasn't, I wasn't able to attend, uh, because they changed my flight, but Todd Rankin, uh, filled in. And I think he brought beef to the, to the.
Drinks from the fridge. They appreciated that.
Council only fridge, just me in there.
Yeah, he, he was like this typically, anyway, so what else you guys talk about, Todd?
Let's hear, just give me a second, grab my cheaters.
I call, I asked Kelly and Carol, uh, but they screened my call.
They're tired of smorting you.
Yeah, they, they don't, yeah.
One meeting, um, the Breck History Crew is there, Larry Crispell and Larissa, Peter Grossovich and then Ty. Court right that did the, um, the Sally Barber work, um, and came and pitched, um, for a donation of a hundred thousand dollars. For the Jesse Mill Stabilization Project, so basically putting a, um, sort of historically correct roof. Over the existing structure there to, to make, uh, the Jesse there off of Gold Run Road, um, last much longer. Total project cost is around three seventy-five, um, Bosak recommended, uh, the town contribute. The, the hundred thousand dollar request to their efforts and ask Breck History to let us know if there was a, if they fell short on that goal. The work would start next summer and go into the fall. There was also, uh, a review of the open space master plan, um, there were a few what I call Rossi edits. So, you know, grammar, concern about the sepia tones of the pictures, um, and then, um, there were some suggestions. About getting feedback from the Social Equity Commission and, um, the, the, the committee also recommended. Adding a sentence clarifying current e-bike rules on soft surface trails, i.e. that they're not allowed. And then it's on our scheduled review, October twenty-fifth, um, and then, yeah, we spent a bunch of time. On the rallying dredge and then that's the gist of it.
I gotta tell you. Yeah, he's gonna be up to single digits before long.
Tourism office?
Tomorrow we meet.
I'll, I'll be interested to see, hear what the recap is for the weekend.
Yeah, I will. It was a monster weekend.
Oh, monster.
Awards at the Colorado Tourism thing.
They did.
Yeah, Friday was the busiest I've ever seen it, I, I mean, it was like Saturday midday.
How, have, any coughs around? How was, any problems? No? Cool.
How many hour week? Seven hour week.
It was insane.
Cool, so it wasn't no incidences?
I mean, if it would have been, we usually hear if it's serious.
Cool. Uh, history.
We have not had a meeting, but just to add to the open house tomorrow, I think they're spl- planning to speak around four at Sally Barber.
Okay. Okay, round four. Get them work with three, I can, I'll hustle up there.
I get a point until three, three fifteen.
Uh, creative, creative Todd Rankin.
That's a really good question, we had a budget meeting, so there's some discussion going on there, and then there's another meeting coming up next week.
They're doing their quarterly report tonight to the council at seven thirty.
Rick, oh, there you go, okay. Events.
Now, we, we have a meeting coming up.
Childcare.
Uh, meeting on Wednesday.
Workforce housing, anything bad?
No, I think, that seems like, did Lori update this?
No, she said she didn't have any.
When will we see the RFP for the Stillson law?
We're still talking about that one, so it's coming, we asked them to clarify some more and get some more data.
Do you, do you think we should? Set some parameters around this thing as a council before it goes too far down any one road?
I'd like to.
Weren't we talking about?
As far as density.
Is it like a, um, a, a lower and a, a higher density option?
It's more of a middle and a higher.
How I've been approaching this the last week or so with the staff, so I. When we saw some of the offsite infrastructure costs related to this proposed phase one, phase two, at Stillson, it raised some real concerns. For me, because if we're talking, you know, six to eight million dollars in offsite road improvement, drainages and that. I just, it makes me wonder if, you know, at some point, we know we have to put nine million into Airport Road, right? You get a lot more bang for your buck doing it at Airport Road, so I'm. We're, so we've got a internal meeting to sit down and discuss this project. With housing and engineering, Public Works and Shannon and I, we're gonna really look at what. When we, you know, when we decided to do Stillson, it was all less, it's kind of two phases, right? Let's go in where the stables are up above, let's see what we could do up there to kind of get something going. If we like it, then, and, and we like the person we're working with down the road, we could look at that kind of phase two would be that lower level. But the whole thing has kind of evolved into wanting to plan everything all at once and do all this and. I mean, I think right now we could do that, if we, you know, maybe we just, if we could put some townhomes, kind of mirror what's across the street. At Lincoln Park, up on that upper level and. Decide really what's next, you know, once we can, do we maybe single family belong down on block eleven? We said we didn't want high density on block eleven, remember that? Why we moved it out to McCain, that's where we should have our single family. We already got, we've, we've got utilities in the ground on block eleven. So, I just. I know a few of you have some concerns also, I gotta tell you, I have some concerns, I've, I've talked with Mark, I've talked with Lori. Uh, shared these concerns, um.
That land's not gonna go anywhere.
And block eleven has utilities and Staples Lot does not, that's what you said, right? I mean, that's.
We're looking. What's the thing, wait, what'd you say we need, we're getting a, a report on something or we need to do something?
A little more vague, a little vague.
Awesome.
We need to understand the water and sewer. That's a big, that could be a big.
Yeah.
And how much we do might dictate if we could, those are the things that we need to vet a little more. Cause listen, if we could do thirty townhomes, right, not huge, and add it to existing. And it doesn't trigger new water, those are the types of things I think that we need to understand. Before we start talking about seventy-five units or something that's gonna trigger all this infrastructure costs and everything like that. So.
Okay.
And I also wanna look at the big picture on debt and cash flow and, you know, we're, we're, we're going pretty darn fast and. You know, it's, it's just starting to hit me when I looked at some of the negatives we're getting.
Fund balance, right now, that's, when you look at the twenty different funds that we do, that's the ne- it's negative. Which means that we approve a budget with a negative fund balance or transfer more money into that thing. Now, if we pull. The six million dollar thing off the table for infrastructure for Stillson, that'll. That'll help it.
I mean, it is where we need to invest, it's, we, we're in a crisis, but I, I wanna look at it over five years. You know, and I know Rick and Dave were working on that.
I wanna be very strategic. I mean. A little frustrated, some of these things, we go into it thinking it's quick and it's easy, but then it, all of a sudden, it's not easy. And it costs a fortune. Yeah?
Can't be housing at all costs, and I worry about affecting a neighborhood that's worked well too. It's a concern for me out there that I don't want to build too much, so if it's gonna cost a lot to build anything, then I agree, I think we pulled on.
Yeah.
Phase, I like, I like Rick's approach to phasing and have the first phase not kick in a lot of infrastructure costs. But, yeah, so we're, I like the, I like that you guys are getting all the departments together and talking. Cause, you know, you're bringing a lot of good information back to us after that.
Well, especially if you phase it with like, you've got Stillson, right, and if there's not significant infrastructure costs to do. A small portion of townhomes that would fit with the character that you've got up there at the Staples, and then also with block eleven. You know, you got infrastructure there, so you can, you can have, you can address that housing need, immediate need to get stuff out of the ground. Without the big capital investment that.
I mean, as you know, there's a couple lingering things on block eleven that we've kind of been setting on and, but we gotta wrap those up. And, and the next year, I think, and maybe start, I think we need to brush off a kind of a planning process. For block eleven a little bit and utilize, um, you know, that infrastructure that's in the ground. And start doing some stuff at that, especially if we start at the, kind of the north end there, right, work our way south a little bit. Big time.
A guy did approach me at the restaurant a couple of weeks ago to ask me if we were interested in doing the airport still. Isn't that awesome?
Just dodge all those buildings out there.
Like, really? That is, that ship sailed a long time ago, dude. Social equity. Anything to add to your hatred of Jeffrey? Any other matters before we go to exec session? We can come back to that later, uh, alright, move the town council, go into executive session under CRS. Section twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four, A and E, to discuss real property that the town may be interested in acquiring. For potential acquisition for open space, to subject to negotiation and for determining positions and developing strategies. In order to instruct the negotiators.
I'll do, Mayor Mamula?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Pro Tem Owens? Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Sade?
Yes.
The time is now six oh one and the executive session has been concluded. Town council has discussed real property subject to negotiation for potential acquisition for open space. For sake of transparency, any final decision as to whether to enter into and execute a final agreement on the acquisition of property is the authority of the manager. And with that, we will break until seven PM for our normal session.
Alan Taz just never won one, so he's got to bring it in here.
Ready? Ready? I'm going to call to order the town council regular meeting for Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. It is seven PM roll call, please.
Ms. Owens?
Here.
Mr. Carlton?
Here.
Mr. Bergeron?
Here.
Ms. Sade?
Here.
Mr. Beckerman?
Present.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. Approval of minutes, town council minutes for September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Anything? All good? Minutes stand as presented. Agenda, Rick?
One change to the evening agenda under new business. We would like to pull off the agenda council bill number thirty-two, series twenty, twenty-two in ordinance admitting policy for relative of the development code. There to mass.
All right.
I'm okay with that.
You good with that? With that being okayed by Jeffrey, the agenda stands, the rest of the agenda stands as approved. Communications to council, we start with public comment. Three minute time limit, anybody? All right, public comment is closed. Rec Creative Arts Quarterly Update. Good evening, ma'am.
Evening.
How are you?
It's nice and quiet in here tonight.
Yes.
Thank you for, I just thought I'd bring some visuals, keep you interested tonight. We at Rec Create are just wrapping up a pretty intense summer and fall season. We were really honored to host and staff Mountain Town twenty thirty and in the town's cultural venue. So I hope you all had a great experience there. We were certainly inspired and I hope you were too. So since we've been about thirty-three percent down in staffing since June, specifically in our facilities, production and management team. So I just wanted to take a moment to publicly thank our resident companies and all of the community partners in, in addition to Mountain Town twenty thirty for their patience and grace with us. We're really glad that it's over, but also have a great team coming into place and a great team who really stepped up and did more than one job for, for our busiest time of year. And just a quick thank you to all of you on town staff too, for your support of all of our temporary public art exhibitions and helping with that install and de-install for, for Trail Mix in particular. So a quick, let's see. Able to advance it? I was before, there we go. So this is a bit about as we move into this next iteration, we are continuing to stabilize the business here in the next quarter, looking into twenty twenty-three. But you can see a little bit about our programming strategy here. We have gone from seeing our vision at Rec Create, seeing Breckenridge as a creative destination more to a creative community. And so you can see most of our events moving from that quadrant in the matrix from spectacle that is more about visitors, widening our impact, high visibility events, high risk events, destinating, destination driving and moving into that lower left-hand corner with the majority of our investments around programming, deepening that impact with our locals in particular. These are going to be more low visibility type events, more low risk and really about building community and connection through the arts. We, one of those events is coming around the corner. October fourteenth through sixteenth is Dia de los Muertos. This is the eighth annual. And this celebration is important not only because of our universal desire to pay tribute to those who have passed away, but also because these celebrations really provide an opportunity to understand and support our growing Latinx population, those of, of us who are really the backbone of our workforce. And having this celebration right in the center of town signals our community values and welcomes and includes everybody in that heart of, of our community. And so we're really pleased that we've had a bit of a shift from this event simply being a shoulder season activation to being something a little more meaningful by encouraging that cultural sensitivity, educating our public about Dia de los Muertos traditions and really doing this through our partnerships. So since twenty fourteen, we've worked with Chicano Humanities Arts Council based in Denver, MSU Denver Chicana Studies Department, Colorado Folk Arts Council, the Aztec Group, who needs, who, oh, this is the word, I can never pronounce this right, so I'm going to skip it. And the Mexican Cultural Center. So those are very meaningful partners for us in producing this festival. And we're pleased to have the Latinx community part of our entirety of planning from, from conception to execution. So really what you can see here is an exhibition at Old Masonic Hall that will be for the next six weeks in partnership with Chalk. Really beautiful, fun and festive. Also this year, what is new is a mobile altar in our air stage. So we're moving out all of our performance equipment from broth parties and, and summer music events and doing an immersive afrenda. So this will premiere on the Arts District Campus during that celebration and then go to Silverthorn Elementary School, Frisco Elementary, Silver Summit Cove, Dillon Valley, a Mountain Jimers partnership. And it'll end at Silverthorn, Town of Silverthorn's First Friday. So this is an example of how we are really deepening that impact and looking at how Rec Create and the arts resources that we have here can be a part of our district programming, the learning of our children and also a resource for other communities and municipalities. can be a part of our district programming, the learning of our children, and also a resource for other communities and municipalities. So a little more, that's what's what it's gonna look like in this immersive trailer, traveling trailer exhibition. So we'll have a ton of kids in there. It'll be super fun. It's your chance to see the inside of their stage two. Tons of educational workshops. Our artist in residence, Stephanie Mercado, will be around doing coloring and collage activity, but also during this time, she'll be taking portraits, she'll be starting her portrait sketches of workforce, Mexican workforce and laborers here in our community that will then, she'll take those sketches back to our L A studio and present them in an exhibition this time next year. So that will be really special. And we'll have all the family favorites, face painting, Pan de la Muerto, which you can see here, Sugar Skull's Grupo Huiz Lo Puchetili Aztec Dance. Now you know why I struggle with that one. My daughter, it would roll off her tongue. And so it's really just a lovely celebration. I encourage you all to come out to our five o'clock opening night reception on October fourteenth. So just a a quick summary. I've been in this role now for one year, feels like a lot longer than that. But we are, have been focused on that stabilization and really that systems evolution. It has taken some time, but when I came here back in two thousand and thirteen, one thing that I noticed probably much like the council had is that we had a bit of an oversaturation of classical and orchestral music at the time. And it took eight years, but we have continued our efforts to be complementary programming asset to our community, really diversifying that. And we're we're pleased to say we're well on our way to enabling Nana Ro to be the the primary classical presenter in the community. So we do have some key accomplishments from this year that I wanted to point out. We had some work to do right at the outset with strengthening our governance model and practices post-merger and leadership transition. So we've got, you know, our board dialed in and it feels like a very good dialogue and working group moving forward and some new additions are exciting and coming the way in December. We have fully integrated Breck music into Rec Create operations, programs and brand. And while doing that, we were able mainly because of the Biffa connection to maintain about five hundred thousand dollars of contributed revenue. So that's pretty big accomplishment. It's been quiet and under the table as we have really worked on focusing those conversations around why this is important, why the shift makes sense for our community and to continue to invest in the whole. So launching that fundraising and annual fund program is is a huge success for us this year. We have reorganized our total financial systems workflows and reports so that we can get to the answer of how much does it cost to run the facilities? How much does it cost to run the Arts District? And use that as a baseline for our strategic planning going forward in January. The block parties seem to have caught on and really are a source of pride and connecting those community neighbors. And it seems like it's beloved and something that will perpetuate year after year. And lastly, you know, we have rebuilt the entire Rec Create management team. We've had twelve out of fifteen positions that we've recruited and trained by December thirty first. So that's no small feat. It's, you know, almost our entire team. So we have an announcement coming next here in the in the fourth quarter of all of those roles, who will be in them, what they will do and how our partners and clients can engage with them so that we can provide the facility service that you expect and that delivers a quality guest experience. So really what's next for us? In our Q four report, we'll have some impact numbers and metrics around all of our programming from this past calendar year. We're looking forward to bringing back the arts and culture partners and leaders and our resident companies to coordinate our calendar and really be transparent about our financials now that we know who pays for what and how that looks like going forward. We'll continue to do work on our F Y twenty-three plans and I appreciate all of the work that Dick and Rick and Todd have put into establishing that budget. We'll have that as a part of your materials going forward. You will see an increase in that budget from what we had originally planned, but it's not because we need to, we need saving, saving, we're having financial crisis. It's none of that. It's about prudent financial management and really the additional costs that it takes to keep the doors open on the facilities in terms of staffing and utilities, et cetera. So those are hard costs and fixed costs that we have that not everybody realizes the impact of. And then, of course, we are looking towards strategic planning in January. I encourage you to start thinking about some big picture issues that you'd like us to address in that process. Questions like what does success look like on the Arts District Campus moving forward? How does Rec Create become more financially sufficient? And what is the future of of the River Walk and our experience and our bathrooms? So that all is is coming. We look forward to to continuing this this good work and thank you for your support. Are there any questions or concerns that you'd like to talk about tonight?
What is that Dia de los Muertos? Is that something to have the dead about dead? Okay.
Yes, it is a a traditional holiday that celebrates the passing on of of family members in the Mexican culture. And that's why we've engaged all of those partners. And it's really quite a beautiful celebration through art and craft and dance. So it's really wonderful experience.
Anything else?
Well, you've done a wonderful job in the last year, so thank you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure.
If you know dead people, you can come.
You can go on the.
It's not confined just to the Hispanic community. It's.
No, it's open to everyone. So that's the point of it is that we can share in our in cultural experiences and trade trade those ideas.
Have a lot of dead people. All right, good. Yeah, I'm into it. It's cool. I'm into it.
Tourism office, Lucy, with an update on Oktoberfest, I hope. She's arrived.
I have a few details. First of all, I would just like to congratulate Tamra and the B C A board on a really significant pivot and successful pivot from where I sit. And it is a pleasure working with her team and it's awesome. We had the River Walk this weekend and it made all the difference. And I think there's probably ten thousand people that were on the street on Saturday that now know there's actually a River Walk because they had to go over there to get their spines. So that was a good thing. I'm gonna start a little bit and I'll I'll be quick tonight, Rick. Don't worry. Overall, summer lodging, I'll start there. We still believe we're gonna come in about four percent under last year. That's what we've been forecasting. The rest of the D M X set has caught up to us. They were nine percent down. Now the whole group is about four percent down. And Bill and I feel pretty confident we'll, you know, come into the end of the season, end of October, about in that same place. Our A D R is flat to last year, so we've not given up rate. Rev par is down because we have given up occupancy. Most, a number of us in the B T O were at Governor's Conference last week when Mountain twenty thirty was here, which killed us. But what's happening in the mountain communities across the board is they're down in occupancy but holding rate. And the western slopes a little bit different. They're up in occupancy and up in rate. So Grand Junction is just killing it out there. And then the metros are still down across the board. So where we are is consistent with all of the mountain communities. Moving on to Oktoberfest, we did do, we got about just under two hundred guest surveys done out there on the street. We don't have all the results tabulated yet, but we'll you know, like to speak from data, so I'm not gonna say much about who I thought was there. I do think that we had about the same or fewer people than two thousand and nineteen. It's really hard to know that for sure, but we had the drone going the whole time. And now we have mobility data. So I think between those two and then bouncing that against our sales, we'll have a pretty good assessment of the numbers. But I I think it was, you know, comparable, maybe a little under. We had a tremendous turnout of support from the nonprofits. We we were really concerned about volunteers and enough labor going into this event because we need a lot of people to work it. And the nonprofits were amazing. A rotary came in. They changed, you know, and they were awesome. They were terrific. We had the football team. We had the baseball team. We had FERC. We we did a food drive. We did a local food drive for FERC. They were thrilled. We're gonna make that a standard part of our big events because the people who were giving, I think they were happier than FERC receiving. I mean, it was really a cool thing. We, so I really shout out to everybody that leaned in and helped. It was incredible. I T P is a contract labor company we use. They were, they were awesome. We doubled up on security. We had lots of security and we almost tripled what we had in cleaning and recycling. We were sending people home. So that was, we were good. No major issues per P D. A little bit craziness Saturday night, but during the event we were good. And from Centura, we had one altitude sickness and a lot of bee stings. So not, that wasn't too bad. Bee stings, yeah, the bees, bees and beer, you know, something. So I thought the crowd was pretty chill overall. We'll get the final, we'll have the final lodging report on the next one. It's too close to the event, but going into the event, we were about twenty-six percent more on the books than we were last year, about ten percent more than we were in two thousand and nineteen. That's a Thursday through Sunday. And keep in mind that Beaver Run was sold out Thursday night with the behavioral health group. So you know, that that spilled into these numbers. Anyway, so you know, successful. We're happy. We want to thank, you know, P D, thank Public Works, thank all of you for your support because this was a little more squishy going into this year and you guys were solid and thank you for that. Season to date demos, just so we kind of know who's here in in general over the summer. We're still running a little more than sixty percent overnight out of state guests, which is solid. Twenty-four percent overnight Colorado. So a little over eighty percent of all the people that we're surveying are at least overnight and they're staying in Breckenridge overnight in Breckenridge. N P S scores have finally gotten to something that I'm confident that the numbers are pretty good. We're in the high eighties. That's normal looking over the last couple of years. When we do the post trip, which means if you do the on the street survey and agree to take a longer one at home, those scores come down. They're in the high sixties. Used to be in the seventies, so we're a little concerned about that, but we know they come down. So we're watching that. Looking forward for the Christmas holiday this year, it's on Sunday. When Christmas is on Saturday or Sunday, that always means a shorter, a less busy holiday just because of travel patterns. And school breaks are later this year. A lot of the colleges don't get out until the twenty-third. So what's happening is right now our Christmas bookings look way soft, but early January, first two weeks of January is stronger than usual, as is February. A couple things, macro things looking at travel going forward. We have been talking about like we had this tidal wave of business come in post COVID, during COVID, and certainly post COVID, the last two summers. That tidal wave is starting to move out. When I saw a survey this morning done by M M G Y and in the affluent American traveler category, they're looking at more than double the number of international trips in the next twelve months. So people are making up for lost time. The average number of international trips for boomers is three point seven in the next twelve months. For millennials, it's like five point something. So a lot of outbound travel. Denver Airport is still the third busiest in the world right now, which is pretty amazing. So we have, and the travel intent for people going back to cities is also back on the rise. So New York, Paris, London, they're on top of the considerable. So I think we've been talking about, you know, people will go back to traveling the way they used to travel. There's gonna be a correction and then it'll balance out again. So I think we're gonna see an outflow or downward pressure on the number of visitors that we've had here in the last two years anyway. And then we have the stock market. I mean, that always impacts our travel patterns quite a lot. So that's looking forward. And I'll just close with, because I have to brag a little bit on my team, just like Tamra did. But at at the Governor's Conference, we did win the Outstanding Sustainable Tourism Initiative for the Be Like Breckenridge Campaign. So that's the whole team's involved in that. And then from the American Association, the web, whatever it is, American Association of Web Design, Web Marketing, we got the government standard of excellence award for our one breckenridge dot com site, which is our B two B site. And you know, Tessa's group. So those two things. And last thing is we'll have our winter preview in here on October twenty-seventh. And we'll partner with Resort on that one since they carry the lion's share of marketing for winter. So they'll lead that and we'll be there with that.
Awesome. Questions to Lucy?
Congratulations on the awards. I think that speaks volumes about your team and of course you. I had a couple of questions. Have you, did you see what the sales looked like for this weekend for you and for your team and how that compared to the nineteen?
The same.
It was.
And. But expenses will be way up.
Right. Now, was, how was your vendor moving from Pauliner to Breck Brewery?
You don't have.
Yeah, I I think there's, there's a lot. I I mean, we, we, we pulled off Oktoberfest collectively. We had Broken Compass in there and we also had Talbot's cider in there and we got, I mean, Saturday afternoon was quite tough. But we got through it. And like I said, we had a chill crowd. And I think people were, people were just happy to be back into an event. So people are more accepting of, you know, some trade-offs for that. There's some operational things we'll work out, but there's always stuff with events. Yeah.
It was hard after Pauliner had it for so many years.
We, we had people asking, but you know, it's, it's nice to have the local, you know, kind of a local display as well.
The last time that you spoke, the N P S scores were a little wonky because you had a new group involved. How did you normalize those?
We sat down with R R C and made sure that we that we were getting true random sampling and like they were moving around town more than just hovering so much in the ice rink. And that seemed to do it. We now have two surveyors out there. Our normal guy has come back from his sabbatical, so that's leveled it out of it. Yeah, I mean, I'd love to believe they were that high, but it just, you know, I'd try, I'd have trouble explaining the downfall next year. So.
Thank you for pulling off a great event.
My whole team, Public Works, P D, like I said, everybody was great and people that covered four hundred shifts of volunteer work. So it was huge. Thanks.
Hey Lucy, when you said, you you quoted from some score from sixty, from seventy to sixty, is that the N P S?
Yeah.
And where was this?
So what happens, Jeffrey, when they're on the street, you know, we get the scores in the high eighties. And then we ask people, would you be willing to take a more in-depth survey online at home? And those scores are always lower. And that's true across the board, all destinations. And that's, that's what that swing is.
When was the seventy taken?
It's cumulative for this summer.
Oh, and then the sixty, oh, so it's it's seventy or sixty, the sixty is the more long, the the.
Goes lower. Once you get home.
Get home, yeah.
And you're not face to face with the surveyor.
So it wasn't different years. It's the same year, different time that it took.
It's, yeah.
Yeah.
What's in the moment versus what's a couple of weeks later?
Does N P S stand for?
Net promoter score. It's their propensity to recommend Breckenridge as a place to visit.
Well, I think sometimes because it's so crowded, you know what I'm saying? Like, like in other words, if if we, it was a slow or less successful Oktoberfest, if people would probably be happier because it was less crowded, but you know, more people, yeah.
Jeffrey, these are cumulative for the summer.
Yeah.
So we'll have them for just the event, but I don't have that yet.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Other questions for Lucy?
Congratulations, Lucy.
Thanks.
Great awards. That's fabulous.
Well, I'll tell you what, it gave us a lot of confidence just knowing how many people had our backs because there were a lot of questions going into this. So thank you all.
Please extend our gratitude to Majay and Wish and Tessa and.
They were amazing.
They were all over the place.
Yeah.
They did a great job. And anybody else that I didn't see, but you know, those three in particular were all over the place.
Yeah. Yeah, Bill and Aaron are coin guys.
Great job. Thank you. All right, continued business. We have second reading Council Bill number thirty-one, series two thousand and twenty-two. This ordinance declining participation. Colorado Paid Family and Medical Leave Insurance Program.
Yes, presented is Council Bill thirty-one, series two thousand and twenty-two, in ordinance declining participation in the. Yes, presented is Council Bill 31, series 2022, in ordinance declining participation in the Colorado Family Insurance Program. It's staff recommendation to decline participation as we have a more affordable, comparable program for our employees.
Questions? Now, anyone in the public wish to comment on this second reading this evening? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On second reading, I move we pass Council Bill number 31, series 2022, the title which has been read into the record.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I think, I think Jay got the second, look Carol.
Okay.
He's my favorite.
Roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Owens. Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron. Mr. Beckerman. Mayor Mamula.
I hope he's still mad about the trail.
I was just looking at that.
We have no first readings this evening. We do have two resolutions. The first resolution number 17, series 2022, this is a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Summit County for the loge, lodge property. Hi Tor. We're best in the house.
Good evening. Yes, this resolution would authorize the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with Summit County that establishes sort of the, the obligations of each party, Summit County and the Town of Breck relative to the ownership, operation, maintenance, redevelopment of the wage or the loge, loge property, lodge property wayside in. And staff is recommending approval and hi Tor. We're running hi Tor by the county GAS to see if they'll approve it.
Excellent. All right, any questions? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this resolution? Is there a motion, Jeffrey?
I move we pass resolution number 17, series 22, series 2022, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Summit County for the loge property.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Beckerman. Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Owens. Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have a resolution number 18, series 2022. This is a resolution finding a petition for annexation of the area known as Entrada consisting of
One point.
1.718 acres undeveloped land known as Entrada to be in substantial compliance with section 31-12-1071 CRS and setting a hearing date of November 8, 2022 for the Town of Breckenridge Town Council to consider the annexation of the area.
Mayor Council, this is a procedural prerequisite to the annexation and development agreement that will come forward at a separate time. The petition for annexation was submitted with the clerk. Staff has deemed it sufficient. The resolution is your approval if you also deem it sufficient. And it also sets a public hearing date for November 8. As we discussed in work session, this does not mean that the annexation will go forward. That's a separate process. First reading of that will be on October 25th and second reading set for November 8. If you have any questions, let me know.
If someone had the inclination to make a motion to this resolution, would they have to read all the words and numbers? Or could they just say the title which has been read into the record?
It's fine if you handle it the way you always do. Yes, it's fine. Or just stick to the title.
Any questions for staff?
I don't know what to do. She's looking. She does that to you.
She's throwing you off your game, man. It's awesome. Anyone in the public wish to comment on this resolution this evening? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move we pass resolution number 18, series 2022, a resolution finding petition for the annexation of 1.718 acres of undeveloped land known as the Entrada to be substantial compliance with section 31-12-107 parentheses 1 CRS and setting a hearing date of November 8, 2022 for the Town of Breckenridge Town Council to consider the annexation of the area.
Second.
Motion and a second, huh? Any further discussion?
She's looking at me like a proud mother.
Any further discussion and roll call?
Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman. Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Sade. Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Planning Commission decisions from the 20th of September. Any call ups this evening? Any surprise call ups this evening? You never know. All right, we already did the report of town manager and staff, order of mayor and council members, other matters. Coming once.
Yeah, I've got one.
Good.
Um, I think most of you on council have had a chance to go up to what's affectionately known as Copper Canyon on a tour. Would love, I guess, feedback and if there's consensus among the group to try and get that on the radar for staff at the, at the town as well as the county to I think the next steps would be getting a survey and then running it through the master plan checklist and then maybe getting a site plan going.
What's the, council feeling okay about that?
Yeah.
I have other priority areas like such as those around Blue 52 and around Alta Verde that I think would be higher priority, but I would defer to staff and those, you know, town or trails people who have been looking at kind of logging the list of projects in their minds for a long time. I'm just not familiar with what else is on the table. And I certainly don't think it has to be one trail at a time. So I do think, you know, if that's a great hiking trail to go forward and that's the highest priority one, I would be happy to get on board with that. But I would rather if you looked at with a lens of what are the trails that we're considering out there right now before I jumped to, let's do a land survey or whatever.
Sure enough.
And we'll have plenty of time to weigh in, see what staff comes up with. And then we can decide, you know, if we do it there, maybe a downhill ADA trail.
Got that reads on that. Any other other matters?